This time I'll call to order the August 7, 2025 meeting of the Clearwater City Council. If you wish to address the council tonight, please complete a comment card. Comment cards are located by the clerk seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. That will move to item two on the agenda, our invocation, and I'd ask all to please stand for the invocation to be given tonight by Pastor Willie Rice from Calvary Church, and then remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Father, we acknowledge that you are the most high God, that you are sovereign, that you rule over the affairs of men with justice and with wisdom and with grace. Father, we confess our need, our need as sinful people, our need as people in need, we need wisdom, and you have promised in your word that if we lack wisdom to ask you and that you would give it generously. And so, Father, on behalf of these civil servants gathered here, Lord, we thank you for them and pray that your wisdom would rest upon them, that they would serve the functions of government over our people, over our city and communities with integrity, with justice, with wisdom, with foresight, with grace, kindness, character, and reflect your ways in all that they do. Father, we acknowledge that we need you, and we're grateful that you have, through your Son Jesus Christ, offered us kindness and grace and forgiveness for our sins. Lord, we pray that you will guide us, we pray that you will bless this council, we pray your blessings upon our city, upon those in need. We are mindful, as we gather here, that we serve them. And so, Lord, I pray that you will guide this council, you will guide the proceedings of this meeting, and that your blessing and kindness and grace would rest upon us and upon our community. And we offer this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go further in our meeting, I'd like to introduce our dais tonight. To my far left, we have our city attorney, David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right, we have city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To his right, we have council member Mike Menino.
Good evening.
To my right, council member David Allbritton.
Good evening.
To his right, our vice mayor, Lena Texchada.
Good evening.
To her right, our assistant city manager, Jennifer Poirier.
Good evening.
And to her right, assistant city manager, Dan Slaughter. And to his right, assistant city manager, Al Battle. That will move to item 4.1 on the agenda. At this time, I'd like to call forward Karen Swafford from our Diversity Leadership Council and our Human Resources Department.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Carla Diaz. I'm joined by Michelle Sheldon and Karen Swafford, and we represent the city's Diversity Leadership Council. We are here today to present the city's 2025 Diversity Poster Contest winners, and the Diversity Leadership Council is proud to announce that this is the 23rd year of our Diversity Poster Contest, and it remains to be one of the most successful outreach programs. Our goal is to help all participants understand the meaning of diversity and celebrate it in their life and within their communities. At this time, I would like to bring up Michelle Sheldon.
Mayor, council, everybody else! Sorry. So each year, as you know, I'm so excited about this, but each year, our Parks and Recreation Department holds a contest for our summer recreation program, kids that come to the camps, and it's all about learning all about diversity and how they feel about diversity and what they think it is to them. So it's really a lot of fun, and the competition, of course, gets tougher and tougher every year, making it more difficult to choose those winners, but you're going to see by the clear result that these kids understand the importance of diversity. We'd like to present to you the 2025 Diversity Poster Contest winners, and prizes are awarded for the first, second, and third place in the six to nine range, age range, 10 to 13, and then 14 and up age group. We also chose overall grand prize winners that we'll announce at the end, so you'll have to wait for those. So first, let's recognize our winners and their artwork. Let's see if I can do it. Oh, maybe? Oh, there we go. Okay. So in our six to nine-year-old age group, the winners are, drum roll, please. Our third place goes to Mr. Luke White. He is age nine from the Morning Side Recreation Center. I don't know if y'all can see this one, but I'm not going to lie, this one is one of my favorites because I love food. I'm not going to lie. And I thought it was really cool because there's such a diversity of food, but I did notice that some people like McDonald's, some people like BK, KQ, you see all that? But did you notice that a lot of people like Chick-fil-A? That young man has had to sit through some serious drive-through lines, right? I mean, let's just say. All right. Our second place goes to Ms. Aurelia Vias. She is age nine from our long center. I love the heart in the middle. I just think that's what diversity is all about, is about a big heart and about enjoying and having everybody come together, so I think it's great. And our next, our first place winner in the six to nine-year-old group is Ms. Jacqueline Mortham. Thank you. All right, and now for our 10 to 13-year-old age group. It gets tougher, people, that's right. Let the drum rolls begin! So for our third place winner this year is Ms. Avery Robinson, she's 11 years old from the Long Center. Look at that one with all the jelly beans. Kind of makes me hungry, not going to lie. All right, our second place, drum roll, goes to Rowan Silverman, and unfortunately, I don't believe Rowan was able to be with us tonight, so we'll certainly put that to the side for them. First place, though, big drum roll, goes to Mr. Brayden Fitzgerald, who is from the Long Center. I love the puzzle pieces because I think it's how we all should fit together. It's like we all make up one big world and one big heart. All right, and now for the 14-years-and-older group. All right? Drum roll, please, for our third place is Jakai Howard, age 16, from North Greenwood. All right, second place, drum roll, goes to Arian Herring, age 14, from North Greenwood. And we all thought this one was interesting. It looks like a thumbprint. And it's just really, really cool, and there's some words on there that I'm still having to look up, I'm not going to lie. I was reading some of them, and I'm like, I don't know what that means yet, so that's really cool. All right, and our first place for the 14-year-old age group is Noel Charles from the North Greenwood Recreation Center. Awesome. I like that, the eye, you're seeing it through, you're seeing the diversity through your eye and how all the different things are, it's beautiful. All right, so all these young people have done an amazing and outstanding job of expressing the meaning of diversity through their art. Each year, we select two runners-up and one grand prize winner out of all the age groups. So our third runner-up this year is, thank you, thank you very much, is Ms. Jacqueline Mortham, age nine, from the Morningside Recreation Center. Our second winner-up is Mr. Brayden Fitzgerald, age twelve, from the Long Center. And, this is the biggest one, it's our grand prize winner overall, is Ms. Noel Charles, age 15, from the North Greenwood Recreation Center.
I would like to thank all the participants and their families for their wonderful and inspiring posters. I'd also like to give a special thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department for orchestrating the contest with their campers and the Diversity Leadership Council for organizing and hosting the poster contest celebration. At this time, I would like to bring up all the winners and the LC Committee members and Parks and Recreation councilors and coordinators for a quick photo.
with the talent these young people have displayed, and thanks again to our city staff, our team. We run outstanding summer camps here in Clearwater. Thanks for the hard work and dedication of all of our city staff and team, and to see these kids flourish, to see their creativity come out is an amazing thing, so I thank you to our staff, and congratulations, kids, you did a fantastic job. And I hope this is just the start of a journey with art that carries you a long way. We're very proud of you here in Clearwater. With that, we'll move to item 4.2 on the agenda, and this time, I'd like to call forward Captain David McCowen from the U.S. Coast Guard Air Station Clearwater, receive the U.S. Coast Guard Appreciation Month proclamation. Whereas on August 4, 1790, the U.S. Congress authorized the Secretary of the Treasury to create a maritime service to enforce custom laws and to prevent smuggling, and whereas the mission of the U.S. Coast Guard and the men and women of Air Station Clearwater and Station Sand Key include maritime safety, maritime and port security, and maritime stewardship, and whereas the citizens of the city of Clearwater and the greater Tampa Bay area rely on the expertise of the members of the U.S. Coast Guard to ensure the safety of friends and family who venture out upon the sea, and whereas the city of Clearwater, as a U.S. Coast Guard city, is especially appreciative of the service and sacrifices made by the members of the U.S. Coast Guard to ensure the safety of our residents and visitors. Now therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, in recognition of the 235th birthday of the U.S. Coast Guard, do hereby proclaim August 2025 to be U.S. Coast Guard Appreciation Month in Clearwater. So Captain, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. We are very proud to be a U.S. Coast Guard city, and we see those, the aircraft flying over Clearwater Beach every day, training and taking care of us and being ready for the worst that might come our way, so we're so appreciative of the U.S. Coast Guard here in Clearwater, and a pleasure to have you here tonight, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, town council. On behalf of the nearly 500 members of Air Station Clearwater, it's an absolute honor to be here and receive this on our behalf tonight. We come from all over the country, and it is very nice to come to a city that welcomes us, who wants to be a part of us, who wants us in their community, and actually stands behind those words. We all feel welcome. I've been in the job now since the 24th of July, and the immediate reception by the city has been nothing but amazing, and we look forward to celebrating next year, which is Air Station Clearwater's 50th anniversary and 50 years of serving the people of Clearwater. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is the first time I have led a meeting and I have not introduced Rose Marie Call, our city clerk. She was the first person I introduced on the dais, so our city clerk's not here tonight, but fortunately, we have the deputy city clerk, Nicole Sprague, here tonight, so. Thank you for being here tonight and helping us out.
Good evening.
Yes, would you like to make a few comments?
For the record, no.
There's a chance to say that word.
That will move to item five on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Move to approve the July 10, 2025 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time, we'll move to item six on the agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from tonight's consent agenda?
No, I'm sorry.
We have none, okay. So is there a motion to?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda 6.1 through 6.17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Now, we will move to item 7.1.
Approve the adoption of the city of Clearwater's 2025-2026 through 2029-2030 Consolidated Plan and 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, council, Mayor. My name is Dylan Mayo. I'm the acting housing manager. At Monday's work session, we discussed our new consolidated plan and the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. During that meeting, I presented an overview of both plans, highlighting key goals and objectives for the upcoming five-year cycle. To summarize, the consolidated plan will guide us, will guide our use of federal funds to be utilized for programs that foster community development, support affordable housing, and promote economic opportunities for low-income residents, low-to-moderate income residents. The Annual Action Plan for '25-'26, which is the first of our new consolidated plan, outlines the specific funding allocations for housing programs, public facilities, and public services. During the process, we received public input through several community meetings, online survey, consultations, and consultations with local stakeholders. The plan also went through a thorough review process with our Neighborhood Affordable Housing Advisory Board, which was, which they recommended approval to move forward. This year, we're allocating funding for activities such as affordable housing construction and rehabilitation, public services, small business assistance, and improvements to public facilities. With that, staff is requesting that council approve the adoption of the proposed consolidated plan and the 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan, and authorize necessary officials to enter into agreements with HUD and our community partners. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Is there anyone here from the public tonight that desires to speak to the agenda item 7.1? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 7.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 8.1.
All right, Mayor, 8.1 is a second reading, so we have ordinance number 9807-25, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between U.S. Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, together with certain right-of-way of Union Street, Soul Road, County Road 193 into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.1? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 8.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.2.
8.2 is ordinance number 9808-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between U.S. Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33759, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as institutional I and drainage feature overlay, providing an effective date.
Is anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.2? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 8.2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.3.
8.3 is ordinance number 9809-25, also here on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real properties located on the north and south side of Sunset Point Road, approximately halfway between U.S. Highway 19 and McMullen Booth Road, whose post office addresses are 2885 and 2860 Sunset Point Road, and an unaddressed parcel on Sunset Point Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as institutional I, providing an effective date.
Is anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.3? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 8.3.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is unanimous. Agenda item 8.4.
8.4 is ordinance number 9828-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1405 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, together with all the abutting unincorporated right-of-way of 1408 Seabreeze Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.4? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 8.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.5.
8.5 is ordinance number 9829-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, upon annexation into the city of Clearwater as residential L or L, providing an effective date. Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756, together with all the abutting unincorporated right-of-way of 1408 Seabreeze Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.4?
Moving to approve Agenda Item 8.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.5.
8.5 is ordinance number 9829-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the north side of Seabreeze Street, approximately 145 feet east of Sunny Park Road, whose post office address is 1408 Seabreeze Street right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.4?
Moving to approve Agenda Item 8.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.5.
8.5 is ordinance number 9831-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, together with certain Ridge Avenue right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.7? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 8.7.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.8.
8.8 is ordinance number 9832-25 here on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for a certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, together with certain Ridge Avenue right-of-way into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.7? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 8.8. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.9.
8.9 is ordinance number 9833-25 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the east side of Ridge Avenue, approximately 432 feet south of Long Street, whose post office address is 1115 Ridge Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to the agenda item 8.9?
Seeing none, is there any council discussion?
If there's none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 8.9.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Move to Agenda Item 9, City Manager Reports.
Nothing, sir.
Move to Agenda Item 10, City Attorney Reports.
Nothing, sir.
Agenda item 11, Closing Comments by Council Members. Councilmember Cotton?
Yes, thank you, sir. I'd just like to say thank you and job well done to those of us who just got back from Japan for the Sister Cities delegation to Nagano, who is our Sister Cities program. You know, we've had a strong relationship for 65 years and a cultural aspect of that program through student exchange, teacher, teacher exchange programs. And to be in that city, it was very eye-opening. It was a wonderful, larger mountain city that was there. And just the, the respect, honor, and different cultural traditions that we were immersed in for those 11 days were great. I'd also like to say that I was proud of the group of us and city staff that went for the economic driver meetings that we had. They were very productive. I believe that they'll hopefully yield good fruit as just the beginning with relationships that can be nurtured and blended. And, and I just had a really wonderful time working on behalf of the City of Clearwater to make a better end with that relationship, not just with the cultural diversity thing that we have going on, but also with an economic driver input to it, to see a real return on investment for the future growth of Clearwater, Pinellas County, and our region. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you all of the taxpayers for allowing us to go over there and work on your behalf and make our city better. So, thank you.
Councilmember Menino?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, welcome back, everybody. I didn't miss ya. I don't know if leaving me the designated survivor was the best, best route, but you were missed. And staff obviously did an amazing job while you were gone. And you had all the confidence in the world and didn't, didn't miss a beat. But I missed ya and welcome back. What a great way to start our, our meeting with all the little ones. I know we all thoroughly enjoy that and the energy they bring. And to, to award them for their accomplishments is a great start. It's the end, end of the summer coming near, and visited several of the rec centers the last couple of weeks during camps. Just want to give a shout out to all of our Parks and Rec staff. They do such an amazing job through our summer camps, their volunteers, their staff. Truly wonderful. Had an opportunity to speak to some of the parents, and they're all just so appreciative, not only for it being a cost-effective measure to keep our kids safe, but just the opportunities and the learning and socially being with their, their friends and making new friends. But I wish all the, all the little ones and their families a great start to the school year that, next week. I'm sure we're all excited to set the alarms early again, but I hope you all have a wonderful, safe, very enjoyable year of, of learning. Thank you.
Councilmember Robert?
Yeah, and I wanted to add a little bit about our trip to Japan. All I can say is wow. You know, Japanese people are very warm, friendly. We got, we were received very warmly by the mayor and council of Nagano. And we spent a whirlwind 10 days there, going from factories to businesses, meeting the CFO, the presidents or whatever of the different corporations. And all of them really had an interest in maybe coming to the States and coming to Clearwater. One of the businesses that we did talk to was called Daiso. It's a Japanese, like a dollar store. They have over 4,000 stores in Japan, and they're bringing one to Clearwater. It's going to open this September next to Dick's Sporting Goods in Countryside. So, just keep an eye out for that. It's a real Japanese, Japanese experience to go in that store because everything has a yen price tag on it. You need to know, you know, what the conversion is. So you feel like you're in Japan for an hour or so while you're in the store. They've got a lot of good items. But we really took away a lot of good contacts, I would say. And I think it's our job to take it from there and really see if we can bolster this great partnership we have with Japan. So, look forward to it in the future.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. This past Tuesday, I had the honor of representing the city leadership in attending the funeral service for Sergeant Graff. It truly was an emotional day filled with both sorrow and deep admiration. It was clear with every story shared, every shed, every tear shed, as well as every photo seen, that he was deeply loved and profoundly respected, not only by his family, but also his peers and his community. One moment that left a very lasting impression with me was when Captain Freddie Hayes from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department sang "Scars in Heaven." It was beautiful, heartfelt, and so powerful. It was a fitting tribute to a man who clearly touched so many lives. Sergeant Graff served with strength, humility, compassion, as well as with a sense of humor. His legacy will live, live on in the people he led, the family he loved, and the community he helped protect. He will not be forgotten, and may he rest in peace. I also wanted to share my perspective on our trip, our delegation trip to this, our sister city in Nagano, Japan. A relationship that I truly value and that has thrived for over 65 years. It was a true honor to represent our city, and I believe that we all are deeply grateful for the warm welcome we received by every single person we met. Japan is not only a beautiful country, but so are its people. One of the highlights of the trip was visiting Nagano's middle school. The students greeted us with such warmth and enthusiasm. They shared their morning as well as their lunch meal with us. It was heartwarming and unforgettable experience. We also had the opportunity to visit the U.S. Embassy, several businesses and their leadership, as well as the Japan External Trade Organization, JETRO. Each meeting was thoughtful, productive, and with exciting discussions about future economic collaborations. And of course, I can't forget Japanese, the Japanese legendary public transportation. At first, it felt like we were trying to crack a national puzzle or a mystery, but once we got the hang of it, we were zipping around like locals, or at least we looked confident and pretending to do so. It was truly impressive. Their transportation is incredible, both in speed, access, and efficiency. This trip definitely deepened our appreciation for Japan's unique balance of tradition and progress and innovation. We have returned inspired, full of gratitude, and excited for the opportunities ahead.
Move to item 12, Closing Comments by Mayor. I do want to extend my personal deepest sympathies and condolences to Sergeant Graff's family, who before began serving in Pinellas County Schools, served the City of Clearwater. And we're so appreciative of all of our police officers, but certainly those who go on to do other, other duties. We never forget their service to the City of Clearwater. So, our thoughts and prayers are with his family. And also to layer on what others have said about the trip to Japan, I want to thank Mayor Ogawa and the Nagano City Council and all their city leaders who rolled out the red carpet for us, made us feel welcome, and truly celebrated a 66-year relationship between the City of Clearwater and City of Nagano. And one of the most moving parts of me for the trip too was the, the junior high school we visited. Because, you know, we don't go as city leadership every year. We go every five years or so. But those kids from Clearwater go over there every year, and kids from Nagano come over here every year. And seeing, being in that school and seeing the impact we're making by, through this exchange of kids over the years, I think there are 350 kids from Clearwater or Greater Clearwater who have participated in that Japanese exchange over the years. It really is life-changing and changing for both of our communities. So, the discussions there were how do we build on that, this unique relationship, the second oldest in the state of Florida, the sister city. And so we had a lot of good discussions on that. And I want to thank the entire team for going and participating the way you did. You really, all of us leaned into it, and all of us made it as worthwhile as it could possibly be for the City of Clearwater. And I want to thank you all for that. And I want to thank Amber Bryce, who organized it all from our sister, she, she leads our Sister Cities program. She did a phenomenal job in setting it up. And Audra Asia from our Economic Development Team set up stellar meetings with us in Tokyo with the President of Daiso and several other big companies, Japanese trade organizations. And to not just discuss Japanese business in Clearwater, but in Tampa Bay, and how, you know, if there's a, if there's a business relationship that maybe doesn't fit Clearwater particularly, if there's a fit for them in Tampa Bay, it benefits Clearwater. And we had many discussions along those lines as well. So, thank you for all that. And last thing I just want to say was to Councilmember Menino, what you said, school starts next week. And hopefully, everyone is careful all year long, driving around the city and, and not watching for kids. But starting next week, it's a really important time for all of us to not be in too big of a hurry to get to work, that we're not paying attention to school zones and kids crossing streets and neighborhoods. Because I think probably, and Chief Gandy's over there, he probably, probably has a better perspective than I do, but the first week of school, when folks aren't used to school zones and all that, probably the most risky time of the year, when everybody's gotten a little lax on being aware of kids during the summer, and, and now they're back crossing the streets going to school. So, I encourage the community to all be attentive to that. And let's celebrate these students as they're going to school. They are the future of Clearwater and our community. And, and let's, let's all work together to make sure they are safe as they start the next school year. So, with that, I hope everyone has a good week, a good weekend, and we will adjourn the August 7, 2025 meeting of the Clearwater City Council.[1760.13][1760.13][applause][1761.13][1761.13][music]